It's called to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, March the 16th. Our invocation will be done by the Reverend Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church, and after that, we'll have the Plage Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Your Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight, thankful, Lord, for another opportunity to open up this meeting in a word of prayer. Thankful, Lord, for the City Council, Lord, from the leaders to the greatest, greatest, Lord, I pray you'd bless each and every one of them. Pray that the agenda tonight would be done in truth and spirit, and, Lord, you just lead God and direct in each and every decision made. Keep a hedge of protection about our nation and our city, our community, and, Lord, help us, Lord, to lean toward truth, and, Lord, to be peace in a lost and dying world. We thank you for everything you've done. We'll give you honor and praise where it's due. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America and to a public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Pastor Berryhill. We appreciate you coming in. We know you have other engagements this evening, so we really appreciate your time. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm the mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to our legislative work session for tonight. The business that we'll discuss this evening will be voted on next Monday. So this evening is a work session. We'll hear the information and then make our decision next week. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Meeting. And I don't know what's going on, but if the business you are not, is not here that's listed on the agenda, there will be ample time under the Agenda item, comments from Citizens and Delegate section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues, and then we'll jump right into the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in you just continuing to speak in the microphone. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience. Cheer or carry on a conversation while you're at the podium. We ask that you would just address the chairperson, and we'll take all that information into consideration to help us make our decision. We are only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and if you have an electronic device, we'll ask that you please turn those off until, or put them in silent mode until the meeting is over, so they will not be disruptive. Now, the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions to help us understand and maybe just clarify some things, so that we'll be able to vote on these issues next Monday. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. And each, we only have one opportunity. It's not a debate or going back and forth, asking questions. It's just really for us to receive the information and take that into consideration when we make our decision. Prior coming to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out the speaker form. Those speaker cards will give us your name and address, and you would hand that to our city clerk, Ms. Acker. When you come to the minor, please give, I mean, the, we don't have any minors, I'm looking at, when you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record, but minors do not have to give out that information. I believe that's it. If you have any printed material, please give that printed material to Ms. Acker. She will make copies and pass those copies out to us at a later time. Now, we do have printed agendas outside on the table, and/or you can follow us on the screen. So now we'll move on, and we do the agenda based on committees. Our first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items under the Economic Development Committee tonight.
Yes, sir.
And if it's the council's will, I'd like to read both of those items together, because they're both related. The first is to appoint Toby Foster to serve as the post-two member of the Development Authority of the city of Douglasville to an unexpired term expiring July 23rd, 2026. The second is to, second item is to appoint Sheraton Jones to serve as the post-three member of the Development Authority of the city of Douglasville to an unexpired term expiring July 23rd, 2026. And we have Ms. Kristin Tate, who we don't get to see very often, coming up to tell us a little bit about what we're just looking at.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristin Tate, 6695 Church Street. There are two vacant unexpired term positions on the city's Development Authority. Both post-two and three terms expire July 23rd, 2026. Staff conducted a citywide search over the last few months to recruit for these positions. Mayor Pro Tem and staff members conducted interviews, and Mr. Toby Foster and Ms. Sheraton Jones are the two recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Does anybody have any questions? I assume neither of the applicants is here tonight. I don't see them.
No, sir.
Any of the mayor or any member of council have any questions or comments? Having spoken to both of these folks and interviewed them, they're both good community members. I think they're very well qualified, and they'll serve the city well. And if, unless there's any objections, I'd like to put both of these items onto the consent agenda for Monday.
I don't see any objections.
I see, as such. So, Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Ms., it seems we don't ever see Ms. Kristin. It's good to see Ms. Tate come forward. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Finance Committee, and the vice chair is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight. We'll start off with item A, which is to adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 Amphitheater Construction Fund Project, and Mr. Byrd will be presenting on all of these items.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Shane Byrd, 6695 Church Street. This evening, I'm going to be taking up a majority of this meeting with all these fund amendment items. However, just to kind of brief before we get into all these, a lot of these are going to be housekeeping items. As you recall, we just recently did a budget workshop with you all to present the FY '24 budget, and a lot of these amendments are essentially staging our capital plan for that future fiscal year that's upcoming very quickly for July 1st. So for this amphitheater item, of course, the big capital project that is nearing completion, I know we're all excited about it, and with this amendment, we're amending the budget by $1.1 million. The significant change there is going to be coming from where we've reclassed some debt service payments to the general fund, and that is where our general fund is budgeting for next year to cover, it looks like, our interest and principal payments on that debt service. So, all of that to say, we reduced the budget out of that construction fund, moved it to the general fund, and then adjusted revenues accordingly. You'll also see an adjustment to the TAD fund, and that's just where we are waiting on bylaws to get set up and a few other items to be addressed first before we start committing projects using those funds. So this will just roll it back into the TAD's fund balance until we complete that process. Overall, that is the bulk majority of the adjustments there to that amphitheater budget. We're also lining up for our current change orders that we've received, one through 11, and then this should carry us kind of through the rest of the budget.
Shane, how much do we have in a contingency fund for that particular item, for the amphitheater?
Yes, sir. So we have a contingency currently of $2 million. That is going to be pending, of course. As the change orders come through, we adjust that contingency based on that activity, but we do have a $2 million contingency currently as of this budget amendment. So plenty of money there for these, you know, unforeseen events that occur on projects.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on that particular item? Anybody? All right. Item B, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 Jesse Davis Park Construction Fund Budget. Mr. Byrd.
All righty. So another exciting, large project that I know the citizens are very much looking forward to seeing complete. Now, with this budget amendment, we're basically adjusting just to shore up our contingency. So we're going to be requesting just a small transfer from the general fund based on unused salaries from this fiscal year, so kind of housekeeping, moving available funds around to fund these projects. So we're going to take that general fund proceeds and put it into the owner's contingency, which is about 10% of that project total, and that'll be a $2.1 million contingency for the use on the Jesse Davis Park construction budget. So with some of those bond issuance costs, we've included those in this budget. However, we are going to be moving the debt service payments off of this fund and over into the bond millage fund, because we'll actually start collecting the millage from that for this bond on this year's property taxes coming up. So we're going to go ahead and shore up this budget and then get that contingency ready. I'm sure you all remember the recent change order, change order number one for this project. It wasn't an effect on the overall bottom line total, just expanding out that finish date to April. So no effect on the overall project budget itself for construction. It's just adding to our contingency, so we have that healthy kind of reserve for unforeseen conditions.
And I really appreciate the fact that we're very conservative in that. We're covering ourselves, and so that's good. Any, yes, Madam Mayor?
Sir, the question that you ask about the amphitheater budget, I mean, and the contingency, do we have a healthy contingency?
It is. It's the $2.1 million figure that we're going to hold as the owner's contingency on that project. So as unforeseen conditions come down or owner requested changes occur, we can draw down from those funds and have that healthy contingency there, so we're not getting ourselves change ordered to death and not having money for it. So this will take care of those concerns.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments from council on that item? Item C, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 Municipal Grant Grants Fund Budget.
So this is a fun one. I always like to present to you all, as well as the citizens, because it really goes to show how city staff is using grant opportunities to help fund some purchases of capital equipment. You know, Police Department especially makes use of Department of Justice grants. This amendment here is more or less a housekeeping item as we get ready to finish out this fiscal year. We're getting ready for fiscal year '24, and then this will close out some of these completed projects. Something I like to note, and you'll see it on the last page of the memo, it should be page five on the item, you'll see that of our award revenues, we received $1.8 million, and the city only had to match $32,000 of that based on this budget amendment. So you can see that almost $2 million in grant funding from Department of Justice, state organizations like GRPA for our boost grant for the after-school program, all these opportunities that have had zero match requirements have been phenomenal opportunities for us to expand services and provide, you know, new equipment to the PD, new equipment to other departments. So something I'd like to highlight, overall, this amendment is just going to be adjusting out those grants that are completed with a total adjusted budget of $1.8 million.
Whoever's writing the grants, we... They're doing a good job. How many, how many folks do we have writing grants?
So we have a unique way to do it. We finance coordinates with the different departments. So, for example, I'd like to give a lot of credit to Shawara Thrasher with the Parks and Rec Department managing the GRPA Boost Grant. Her and I work on a regular basis, just making sure that from the finance end, I'm tying up everything with a nice bow financially, and then she's monitoring and maintaining the program. So it's really a collaborative effort throughout all departments in the city. We don't have a single grant writer. We have, pretty much, a lot of your staff is getting experience in writing grants or applying for them, knowing what our requirements are. So it's very exciting to see these opportunities come in, and then to be able to work with the staff on their individual grants.
That's great. That's fantastic. Any, any questions or comments on this item? Since Shane described it as a, as a housekeeping item, I'm going to ask to place this particular item on the consent agenda for Monday. Is that all right?
Looks like it's good consensus.
Item D, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 Tax Allocation District Fund Budget.
Very similar to some of these other items that are housekeeping in nature. With our tax allocation district fund, we've received those proceeds off the property taxes for properties within the tax allocation district or the TAD, and our original budget, estimated conservatively of $325,000. However, we're going to be adjusting this to the actuals, which is going to be a total of $1.5 million in expenditures and then $1.5 in those revenues. So from $325,000 up to $1.5 is a good significant change, but it's good to see that TAD doing what that TAD will do, so. And again, as I mentioned, on the amphitheater project, we did reduce $300,000 from funding. However, once those bylaws are done, we can then identify projects to use these funds for in the downtown TAD area.
Any questions or comments? Nope. All right. Item E, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 ARPA Fund Budget.
All righty. So the big one, one of the big ones, the ARPA, which has been a great windfall for those that aren't aware of it, you know, citizens listening, it stands for the American Rescue Plan Act, and it's state and local fiscal recovery funds that have been made available to state, local, and tribal governments to help fund for things like government services. So for our case here in the city of Douglasville, we had $10 million that we could use for capital improvements, lots of fleet replacements for aging police vehicles and other vehicles throughout the city's departments. We've also had other significant, great improvements, and we've budgeted for the recycling center at $4.5 million. So this item is primarily adjusting some of our capital funding to accommodate that recycling center, and then we're re-identifying in some of these other amendments, like the 2016 SPOLOST, where we've moved them from ARPA into SPOLOST 2016, or 2022, or another identified funding source. So you'll see some of that in the detail behind the memo, but overall, we're just amending this budget to get us really to closing out that, that ARPA fund. We had a lot of great activity. We have to spend it all by '26 and have it all encumbered by 2024, so we're moving right along with that.
Good, good.
Any questions or comments on that?
The recycling center.
I'm going to ask to place that particular item on the consent agenda, if that's all right?
As they're nodding, yes.
All right. F, adopt, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 SPOLOST 2016 Fund Budget.
So it's been a long six years, and I'm going to be sad to kind of pass this baby off and to see her, see her finish out. We're getting on our last, last month of collections for the 2016 SPOLOST, which has been a, overall, including our other funding sources, it's been a $45 million, $46 million SPOLOST, which has been a phenomenal capital improvement program that we started back in, it started collecting in 2017 after the voters voted on it in 2016, and of course, we are in that final month of collections now, where we're finally identifying the last projects that need to be spent, and then from there, we'll go ahead and wrap up SPOLOST 2016 and kick off SPOLOST 2022. So overall, y'all will see the adjustments here. The adjusted budget's going to be $46 million, and most of these changes are, again, housekeeping, where we are closing out budgets or identifying kind of some of these last, last projects that we're getting staged for the SPOLOST. There's still some contingency there, but as we've seen with ARPA and some of these other things, it goes pretty quick, especially with the amount of capital that we do have. So very excited to see, a little bittersweet, but very excited to see SPOLOST 2016 finish up and us get started on 2022.
Putting 2016 in rearview mirror, any, any questions or comments on that particular item? We'll place that one on consent agenda also, if that's okay. And last but not least, item G, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2022-2023 SPOLOST 2022 Fund Budget. Mr. Byrd.
All righty. And last but not least, because we will be seeing this, like we've seen the 2016 SPOLOST over the next six, six years, as it starts collecting in April of this year, we will have that again for six years, and then it'll, it will use those funds for designated capital improvement projects for facilities, public safety, transportation, and parks projects. The categories are a little bit different this, this go-around, where we've reduced in some areas, such as parks, because of, you know, things like Jesse Davis Park. They've had a lot of the 2016 SPOLOST. So the 2022 SPOLOST is a little different than that previous program. However, we are going ahead and staging our first year of projects with the SPOLOST 2022, and we've estimated about $10.4 million in the first year of collections. So that's essentially what we've earmarked here in terms of projects and kind of setting up those projects' contingencies. So you'll see item five on that agenda's cover memo, where you'll see the breakout of the contingency, and those are split along the lines of what was adopted through the referendum and voted on by the, by the voters. So this will split those projects according to their voted chair that they get, and then as we get more projects identified, we'll pull funds out of contingency and move them into actually identified projects. So some of these projects have been identified, but we do have some contingency there sitting as well for us to be able to move things around as needed.
Any questions or comments? I just wanted to say, Mayor, I'll let you jump in, but you folks in finance, Karen, Shane, and the rest of y'all, thank, y'all do a fantastic job. I appreciate everything y'all do. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Coach. Great encouragement and so true. We really appreciate you all keeping us abreast of what's going on. I did want to just make a comment. This is a great chart. Before, we had a pie chart. It helped me to kind of get in my mind to formulate the percentages. So just in the future, maybe when we, when you have a chance, you can do another pie chart to say, like, 45% here, and transportation, public safety, all of that kind of stuff, facilities will be nice.
Yes, ma'am, and I do love me some charts. So I'll put that chart together and get those included on future memos for y'all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Byrd. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Shane, and that's all we had tonight under finance.
Thank you so much. You handled that committee very well. I appreciate it. And Mr. Byrd, you're looking very presidential this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You did a great job. You're doing well, Ms. Callen, getting him, getting him prepared. Okay, then we'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. We'll come back to you, Councilman Watts. Personnel Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
To adopt an ordinance to amend Sections 11-4 and 14-1 of the city of Douglasville Personnel Policies and Procedures to provide the policy for holiday work by essential personnel, to revise the designation of essential and non-essential employees for the purposes of the inclement weather policy, to repeal any conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. And Ms. Austin Bing, that was a mouthful. You, you take it from here.
I have a mouthful coming up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tia Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources Department. This item before you is a recommendation to amend our personnel policies and procedures, specifically Section 11-4, which is holidays, and Section 14-1, which is inclement weather policy. On the first, on page two of your attachment, you will see a highlighted yellow paragraph that will explain what our recommendation is, and for the record, I will read as follows. For the purposes of this section, 11-4, essential personnel shall mean employees who, as in any part of their duties, work outside of city property, performing any one of the following tasks: patrolling, managing vehicle traffic, preventing crime, addressing effects of inclement weather and hazards, providing sanitation services, and handling emergent quality of life matters that affect the public's daily lives. Employees who are designated as essential personnel may be required to work on a holiday in order to fulfill essential duties and services which are provided to the residents of the city of Douglasville. The chief of police and the public services director shall determine which employee or employees will be required to work on a holiday, and shall designate another day during the week immediately following the day the employees worked on a holiday to be used as the substitute holiday for the affected employee. The department director shall submit a list of employees required to work on a holiday to the human resources director no later than 15 days prior to the occurrence of the holiday. The department director shall submit with the list of employees the date which shall be designated as the substitute holiday for each affected employee. And the list of employees required to work on a holiday and the substitute holiday designation for each employee shall require the approval of the city manager. So I'm happy to take any questions that you may have about that recommendation, but...
Question?
I'm sorry.
Anybody?
Chair, yes, I have a question. What are you, what's going on now? The city paid holidays are just those that we observe, and so in order to minimize service delivery interruption, this will allow the chief and Greg to designate a substitute holiday if need be. For instance, I know for sanitation services this year, there may be service delivery interruption with Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So we want to substitute one of those so that the service delivery won't be interrupted.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. I was, so they have to take the, the holiday, if they work on that holiday, and they aren't scheduled, and they were asked to come in by the chief or Mr. Roberts, then they have to make up that date within 15 days?
They will have a different day that will be their day of rest and paid holiday. So the 15-day language...
Prior to...
Yes, ma'am. That just means we need the list of names prior to that holiday, so we can make the payroll adjustments.
Okay. And then how long do they have to make, within the same week, or it doesn't matter, they comp days, or they work that out?
So it would be based on what the, the chief or Greg would allow, but we want to keep it within a close proximity, within a week or so of each holiday, so that their payroll, just that their payroll won't be affected.
Okay. And they can't stack up days and then at the end of...
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments?
And then the next section, Mr. Chairman, if I may, on your page three of your attachment, is just housekeeping, and it just is cleaning up our language as it relates to our inclement weather policy. So you will see the red strike through, making sure that our department titles line up and our department director titles line up with what we currently have. So this is just housekeeping.
Okay. But the, the other one is something that we're adding too.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? And we'll place this one on the consent agenda, unless I hear otherwise. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all I have tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our human resources director, Ms. Bing. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee, and the vice chair is Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. The first is authorize plan of plat approval for the purpose of a lot-line adjustment for 2.989 acres at the Laurel Woods subdivision in Land Lot 23, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 00230150109 and 00230150112. Application by Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC, T.O. Greg Hasty. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator. My address is 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. So the item before us tonight is an exemption plat for the Laurel Woods subdivision. Essentially, they're doing a lot-line adjustment. They're moving the lot lines on a parcel so that the detention pond for the subdivision is contained in one parcel. This helps with maintenance of the detention pond, and it also helps in the development process. This item has been reviewed by the pertinent city and county staff, and there are no additional concerns or conditions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions by our mayor or council? Okay, second item, thank you, Ms. Jackson, is authorize staff to refer to the planning commission of city-initiated rezoning from PSB, which is Public Semi-Public, to CBD, Central Business District, at 8458 Campbellton Street and Lot, Land Lot 160, District 6, Section 5, for partial 0016015D080. Application by Community Development. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. This, so staff is proposing a city-initiated rezoning at this site. The current zoning is public semi-public. Public semi-public zoning is reserved for government facilities and civic uses. This particular parcel, though, is currently privately owned, and it is vacant. The previous user was a bank, and the bank was operating out of compliance with the zoning ordinance. Staff is proposing that we rezone... with the zoning ordinance. Staff is proposing that we rezone this parcel to Central Business District. Central Business District is appropriate for the downtown area where this parcel is located, and it is also in congruence with the adjacent parcels in the area. For reference, it's at the corner of Campbellton and Spring Street, across from the bank.
Thank you so much. You articulated that very well. Any questions? Yes. Mayor Protem?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, that's the old BB&amp;T bank, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Formerly occupied BB&amp;T. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. We have no other business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair, and Ms. Jackson. Thank you. Did a wonderful job. So many fresh new faces. So we'll move on then to item 11, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We also have no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Technology Committee at this time?
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business.
I skipped one.
Oh, there's one? I'm sorry.
Recreation Culture and Tourism Committee chaired by Council, there was no business. Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had so much before. I know you wanted to just give me a break. We have no items tonight under Recreation Culture and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. I apologize for interrupting you. Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley, who is Chair of Transportation Committee.
That is okay, Madam Mayor. You can interrupt anytime. You're the mayor. There's no business under transportation.
Thank you so much. Such civility, and thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, for keeping me on track. Do we have any other business to come before council tonight? The public. I did want to ask about the leak, the gas leak. City Manager, or Mr. Roberts, you have a report for us. Now, you've been keeping us, you've been so gracious, keeping us up to speed, but there still are cones out there, so I'm just making certain everything is clear.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Greg Roberts, Public Services Department. So the Atlanta Gaslight Crew is still on the scene, and, but they have it completely under control. It was a two-inch line in the, where it connects out of the alley into O'Neill Plaza, and it just, they found it through just routine leak checking. They come through with their devices and just check for leaks. So it was a low-level leak. So it was just taking a while to get it repaired. So it'll be a few days/weeks before we can get the concrete poured back.
Oh, wow.
But we'll, we'll keep it as passable as possible.
Well, good. Thank you so much. We appreciate you keeping us informed, and we don't have anyone that's sick or anything, no one fumes.
Not that I'm aware of. It was such a low level that I wouldn't have been able to smell it with the pollen and dealing with my issues. I wouldn't have even smelled it. But their leak detection devices caught it.
Were able to do it. Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem?
Any idea what the cause was? Was it just simply deterioration in an old pipe or?
I would, I would be making an assumption, but no work has happened there, and there were no bores. No one would have bored through it, and it was just like a pinhole. So it's probably not brand-new. It just probably has just reached the surface level to where it would be detected.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other concerns or comments? Okay. Green, that's kind of green, Mayor Protem. Okay. We'll move on to then to updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, or our city staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I don't have any business today.
Thank you, ma'am. Our Chief of Police, Chief Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I know we did have a press conference by the Sheriff's Department, and he thanked you and the Police Department for helping him to get this active case going to try to get these people arrested in the community for that travesty we had last week. Our City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. If I could request a brief executive session to discuss the personnel matter, it'll be very quick, and the only staff person you need is me.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. We will do that, City Manager. We'll always accommodate you. Comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to talk to us about any business you're made to the City of Douglasville.
These are figures.
She'll pass them out to us.
Well, let me tell you what it's about.
Okay, you have to come to the microphone because it's, they're rolling, it's like...
This is about a ditch.
Yes, ma'am. If you give us your name and address.
I came home this morning to find that WSA was cutting a ditch in front of my house. And I live on Rose Avenue.
Okay. Can I have your name and address?
I have three houses. Well, really, I have four houses. The Stone House that all of you's probably familiar with. I know that you're my district person, and I tried to call you today, but this all came up somewhat today.
I'm sorry. Could you please give us your name and address?
I don't hear well.
Yes, ma'am. Can we have your name and address for the record? You're on Rose Avenue? We have your name, please?
Name and address. Okay. My name is Ginger McIntyre.
Yes, ma'am.
It's 8697 Rose Avenue.
McIntyre.
And 8667, 8679, and then 8713 was my parents' house.
Yes, ma'am.
So I've lived on that street all my life. Okay, the problem that has arisen with us is because the culvert was where it's supposed to be when the road was built. And so now the culvert is about four feet below the street line. And so what they're striving to do is come down there and cut a ditch. So the water was flowing through it because both ends of the pipe was open. We made sure of that. I'm 80. My brother is 76. We have a bank that's probably 10 feet high. We cut that. We've been cutting the shoulder of the road. Right now, my mailbox is about this far from the road, and I have been coming behind the road, the mailbox, in order to get to it because the curve comes up there by the cemetery. They come around that curve so fast, I can't get my mail out of that box before somebody zips by me.
Wow.
So the problem is because of the straightness there. Now, I brought pictures, and I don't know if you want to see them.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not as good as seeing it, and I had hoped to get with you this afternoon so you could help me and you'd know better what I was talking about. But I think if you'll put your mind to this, if you go home tonight and somebody's digging a four-foot ditch, maybe five feet deep in front of your house, you're going to be rather upset, and it's rather unsightly. And quite honestly, I think it would be terribly unsafe because they come down that road, and they come so fa, they're passing each other on that road. They double-lined it, I think, last night, but they're double-passing on that road. And of course, we all know what the traffic's like.
Right.
But if somebody hits, there is no shoulder. They're going right in that ditch, and if they even lose control, and they're going to go right down in that hole, and they're going to be like sideways. So for us to cut it, there's no way. There's just no way. So what I would like to have is some curbing and some guttering, and I've been to WSA. I talked to an engineer there probably three years ago. We are on sewerage, and he said, "Oh, this is no problem. We can just, you know, put you right on the sewerage." Well, I went back, and something happened because he was kind of cold on the situation. And so then, now, I don't know, and I may not even be supposed to be before y'all.
It's okay.
But I hopped around from place to place, but I still have a hole in the ground.
Wow.
So I'm hoping y'all can help me.
Yes, ma'am. Did it just start? We can talk to WSA. I'm on the WSA board.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
It's like, did it just start? Did the hole, did they just start digging? Did they just start digging the hole?
Well, I got so mad, and I asked them to quit.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they were gonna, they were gonna continue digging all the way in front of my, the Stone House is, my parents built that house right after Daddy came out of the Second World War, and that culvert was probably put in the ground in 1945. That's when my house was built. So I live in the house next door.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. And then my, you know, my grandparents lived in the other one, and it's just become a family thing. Joel Dodson, the city attorney, used to live there behind the lake. We all were slamming the lake when we were kids.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. This is...
By the way, I remember when that road was paved, so I'm telling you, just almost...
This is Women's History Month. You look beautiful. You do not look, the age you told me, I have to see your license. I don't believe you. You are very beautiful. You look great. We're going to take this into consideration. We'll talk to the Water and Sewer Authority for you. We'll talk to WSA and someone from the city. We can circle back and, and...
I'm down here.
It's okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Your council member wants to speak.
Ms. Ginger, I just wanted to apologize. I did see that missed call this afternoon before I came up here, and I did not see a message, so I just assumed it was the wrong call. But if it's okay with you, I'll give you a call tomorrow afternoon, and if you'll give your information to Ms. Hampton, we'll look into that and see what's going on.
We'll circle back.
Just tell her to give, Ms. Hampton over there, just go see Ms. Hampton.
Okay.
And we'll talk to WSA.
You know, like I said, and I apologize if I'm before the wrong...
You're fine.
But everybody says go over there, and go over there, and go over there, and I still just have a ditch.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Sorry for your inconvenience. We have any other comments from citizens or delegates?
Should have been a community.
Okay. Okay, if we don't have any other comments from citizens and delegates, I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
So moved. Second.
After recess, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned to executive session after a five-minute or a short recess.